We're ready. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone. Let's go and get started. We'll move right to agenda adoption. Do we have any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull up the consent agenda. I'd like to pull out items 2C and 2D and put them in old business.
2C and 2D. 2C and 2D will move to old business 5A and 5B.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Hearing none. I'll enter. I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, let's do a quick roll call real quick. I see Ian, Rick, Troy, Rodney, Diamond, Ron. I see John down there on the bottom. So it looks like everybody's here. All right, and here now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with changes, C and D moving to old business. Okay, one more time. Sorry. We had a motion on the floor. Second.
Smith, second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Councilman Ron. Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. All right, let's move to. All right, we're going to go to the invocation, which I'll do. Let us pray. Lord, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may be, may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Let's keep moving. So we're going to go to public comments. I think we have one person who sent us an email. I'm not sure if they're on. We'll go right now to the chat if anybody would like to speak. I see Mike Davis. Mike Davis, we're going to go with you first and then we'll go out back to the floor. For anyone else wishing to address council. So Mike, go ahead. He's on mute. Mike, can you hear me? He's in the chat. Mike, if you can hear me, if you can take yourself off mute. We found you.
There. How's that?
That's better. Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry. But anyway, just wanted to say thank you, Mayor and council members. We're very excited about this project and wanted to relay to you that we're on a timeframe regarding the project and just want to move it forward. But again, we've been this project is very beneficial to the town through Tom Curry and Robinson Church Road Improvements and of course Greenway and many other things. So just wanted to voice my appreciation and excitement for the project. So I'm here to answer any questions. Should the council or mayor have any questions for me? So that was it.
Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Yeah, what about the lot sizes for that?
They are still the same as currently, or I guess you could say past presented on the project. So they're roughly over 7,500 square foot. So they're about 60 feet wide by 125 roughly.
Okay, thank you. How about how far off the road would they be on Robinson Church?
Well, it varies, but there's a required buffer. And I believe it was 25 feet and we are planting and doing a berm and that's per the UDO.
Okay, are you putting any trees in that would be older? That would be, you know, that we would have, you know, older, bigger trees on the backside of Fenton Dell or anything like that?
Well, there's a do not disturb buffer to Fenton Dell. We're also have on the plan have marked which I guess you could say heritage trees we're keeping and then we're planting back whatever trees are required under the UDO, you know, street trees, lot trees, or any mitigation trees required.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis needs to start his comment over, please. I don't know what he was talking about, what he's referencing to. I can size the conversation, but he was talking and then just audio came in all of a sudden.
So I think everybody else heard him, Rodney. So did everybody else? I heard him clearly. So maybe it was your audio, but we can have him repeat what he said if you'd like.
Well, just what the first sentence or two was.
Okay.
The first sentence was just, good evening, Mayor and council members. Really appreciate being back in front of you and just wanted to relate to the council that we're really excited about this project.
And this project being?
Being the courtyards at Robinson Church.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Davis. We'll move it out to the floor. Anybody else wishing to address council can do so at this time. Either talk or hit the chat, however you choose.
Yes, I have a comment.
You could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Harold Boone. I live at 8412 Locksley Drive, Harrisburg.
Okay, we got it.
Yes, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to say a few words. In 2012, the county tax assessed values dropped considerably due to the economic downturn from that big recession. Harrisburg raised the tax rate to the point where revenues remain neutral, which is understandable. Following those tax years, tax values remained fairly constant with small upwards adjustments in the Harrisburg tax rate. Now, moving forward, excuse me, I hope I sent each of you members and the mayor an email with the numbers on it. Okay, thank you. Moving forward to 2018, there was an increase in the Harrisburg tax rate which resulted in a 22.38% tax increase over the previous year. Now move forward to 2020. There were two significant things happened. First, the revaluation just experienced which increased assessed values. And second, the Harrisburg kept the tax rate at the same as 2019, which is a little bit different than what happened in 2012. So here's my point of contention regarding property taxes. From 2017 to 2020, my tax bill went up 50%. And that's probably true for most neighborhoods in Harrisburg area as it is a growing place and which I see as unsustainable, that kind of growth, I mean, that kind of tax increases. The purpose of the revaluation, as I understand it, is to adjust property values to reflect changes having occurred in various markets. Certain neighborhoods could see a significant increase in values while some neighborhoods could see a modest increase or even a decline in values. And this is true also with commercial and industrial properties with their valuations. So once a revaluation is on the table, I would think that the tax value, excuse me, tax rate should be reduced to reflect a revenue neutral position again. You did it in 2012 to make it revenue neutral. And 2020, in essence, what happened was there was a piggyback tax increase based on the revaluation. In 2012, you did, you did an adjustment to make it, make income for the city the same as it was the previous year. And 2020, you didn't do this, which is a long lasting effect in that tax rates, once embedded, they stay there forever because the next tax rate increase will piggyback on top of the current tax rate. So it seems to me that there's ample growth in the county and also Harrisburg in particular, that we would try to keep taxes as neutral as possible. Then the question I have is why the need for a 50% tax increase from 2017 to 2020? Where's the money going and how long would this continue with such a phenomenally strong increase? Thank you very much for your listening to me and if you have any questions.
Thank you. What we'll do is I'm going to allow our town manager just to give a few comments. We're not going to go too deep into this because we could probably talk for hours on why things happen the way they happen. But I'll let Haynes give you a few comments.
Hey, Mr. Boone, thank you for sharing your email with everyone and sharing your thoughts and comments this evening. I'd enjoy getting the opportunity to maybe speak with you offline so that we could go into detail if necessary on those items in a little bit more detail. But two years ago, the tax rate was increased to accomplish three things. One, the transportation bond that was approved by the voters. Two, to hire additional fire employees and to pay for the new fire station number two built on Rocky River Road as well as the Harrisburg Park project that's currently under construction right now. So those were really the three reasons in 2018. In 2020, it was an extremely difficult budget preparation process for our council because of the impacts of COVID-19. We were really unsure of what that would mean to us. So the idea of lowering the tax rate or going back to what they refer to as a revenue neutral budget was a bit of a gamble for us at that time. So there were, again, a lot of factors as to why we decided to keep the tax rate the same moving into this year, but can certainly understand your concern. You know, the information that you shared is certainly invaluable to kind of see how your property value started high in 2010 and 11. Was impacted by the recession, dipped down. And as we've crawled out of that recession from 2018 until now, you've seen the value of your property reflect that. And as a result, in large part, your tax bill fluctuates with that as well. But I'd appreciate the opportunity, if you don't mind, for me to reach out to you and we can just have a little bit more detailed conversation. And we can, I can answer any other questions or provide you any more detail that you may want to see.
Thank you, Haynes. We'll connect with you offline. We've got your email. He will reach out. I'm going to go to Ginny. You could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Ginny Leach. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I live at 7869 Tottenham Drive in Fenton Dell. I just, I have a question. When I saw that this was, the whole property on the Howie property was going to be up tonight for discussion and then for a vote next month, I was a bit perplexed because I thought that if a proposal had been denied that the developer must wait one full calendar year before making a representation. And here we are less than a year later. So I don't understand why this is even being brought up.
Thank you, Ginny. We're going to defer to the town manager again to give you that explanation.
Hi, Haynes.
Hey Ginny, how are you this evening?
I'm good. How are you?
Yeah, doing great. So you have it spot on. So in our typical, our ordinance requires that if rezoning or any zoning application is denied, you're right, it typically has to wait that 12 month period. In the instance of the rezoning for the Howie property, if you recall, that was during our April council meeting, which was our first virtual meeting that we did. The applicant approached the town after that meeting stating that they had some technical difficulties during that process of that meeting. They were concerned that not everyone heard or received the same information and message. So collectively, the town council had a discussion on whether or not to rehear that case. Basically have them bring back before the council the exact same project that they had proposed the first time. And they agreed to do so under the condition that would be done in person so that we would eliminate any of those issues that plagued us with a virtual meeting. But the reality is, is that when we made that decision back in May to rehear the case, we didn't really know that here we would be in August, still not understanding when in-person meetings would take place. And if we had in-person meetings, the likelihood of having the public attend those in a large number was probably going to be very limited. So the thought process was to rehear the case under the new provisions that we have for all of our planning projects moving forward, where we will hold a public hearing one month and wait and defer until the next month until a vote is actually cast on it. So the applicant for the Howie project or Howie property has agreed to those procedures moving forward. So on the agenda tonight is the rescheduling or the scheduling of those public hearings for next month and then a vote would take place the following meeting. So I know that's a little confusing typically.
I hear you and I understand, but I have a concern. All right. You know, as a member of this town, I'm not just looking out for myself, but I look to see how things impact you guys as well. So here's what I'm seeing. If you go ahead and you have the presentation and you go ahead and you vote next month and the plan is exactly the same, and from where I sat, I attended that meeting, I heard the presentation very well. It was very much in line with what had been discussed at the planning and zoning board level and at the neighborhood meeting level. If nothing changes, you originally voted no. If anyone were to change their vote at this point, that doesn't register well. Something's amiss.
Yeah, and I can certainly understand that. So I won't speak for any individual council members, but we did have council members state publicly that they were unaware of some of the improvements associated with the project. Now, whether or not that will impact or change anyone's vote, that's not for me to decide. But to just ensure that we are doing our best that everybody understands kind of the, the full impacts, all of the improvements that would be made with it was the reason the council decided to move forward with that. So it may be likely that, or it may be that the same outcome occurs. I'm not sure. But again, we want to make sure that everybody hears and understands all the information associated with it.
Well, then I have a request. Next month, when you take your vote, if anyone were to change their vote and well, you know, if Councilman Booth is there and even if he were to vote yes, and you left it the same, it would still be 4-3. But if someone were to change their vote, then I would like to request that that person come prepare with an announcement and an explanation as to the justification for the change in that vote. And I would like it recorded in the minutes.
But just for a clarity purpose, so the public hearing will be next month in September. The vote won't occur until October. So I just want to make, I think you had said that, but I know you kept saying the vote next month.
I thought it was, okay, I thought he was going to present tonight and vote in September. So if he's going to present in September and vote in October, if anyone were to change their vote, then I would like to see an explanation for that recorded in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council can do so at this time, either through the chat or just speak up. Wave your hand. Last call. Did you say anything, James? All right, thank you. We're going to move along. We're going to jump into communications. Oh, never mind. Consent agenda. Sorry. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less C and B.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion on the floor?
Thank you.
Get that? Mr. Smith? All in favor say aye. Councilman Ron?
Aye.
Councilman John? Councilman Rodney?
Aye.
Councilman Ian?
Aye.
Councilman Rick?
Aye.
Councilman Troy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond? Diamond, Miss Diamond? You're on mute?
Yes.
There we go. I got you. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move to Town Manager Finance Monthly Report.
Yes, we do have a finance report that I'll turn over to finance staff here. Just quickly, want to make two public service announcements to any of the members of the public that may be listening. If you haven't had the opportunity to complete the census being completed at this time, please take about 10 minutes and go out and ensure that that is done. It is extremely important for us. It means additional state and federal dollars that can be allocated to our community based on a more accurate census count. So just really want to strongly encourage folks to participate in that as it wraps up. Also, our planning department is going through the process of updating our unified development ordinance and we're seeking community feedback on that. So far, we've gotten good responses from folks, but just if anyone's interested in providing their feedback, that information can be found on our website or by contacting our planning staff. But just two public service announcements related to those things to encourage our residents to participate in those. And I'll quickly turn it over to finance department for their report.
All right, thank you, Haynes, and good evening, Mayor and council. I will try to keep the finance report brief tonight as you'll hear plenty of my voice in the new business section of the agenda. But we have our revenue and expense dashboard here after one month into fiscal year 2021. And I want to draw your attention to tax collections. They're showing in red this month at just 1% collected for the year. We typically don't collect property tax revenue until the November, December, January timeline. So we'll see that lag behind for the first few months of the year. And that's having an effect on the general fund, a few lines above that, where it's showing only 3% of the revenue received this year. So that is in line with our expectations for the first month of the year. Department expenditures for their operations, you'll see that almost all the departments listed there are in green. Council is showing at 27% compared to 8% through the year. And that is due to about $60,000 of CARES Act funds that we are showing as a special council project under the council heading. So that's why that department looks high. And here are the rest of our departments. You'll see that everyone else is in line with their expectations are actually under budget at this point for the year. Coming on over to our single year projects here, not too much to draw your attention to this month, but I do want to mention that we started, or we have contract negotiations going on for the town center trash compactor and that will be brought to you at the September meeting for your consideration. And then I also want to point out that Powellville Street Resurfacing will be bid out in the month of August and that will also be brought to you in September for your consideration. Some of our multi-year projects in design right now, they are moving along just as they were last month. We don't have too much to report here other than just another month of progress on all of these. And our multi-year projects in construction, we've had some movement on these various projects and you'll see that the 1920 water lines were completed in the last month. So those are moved down to the bottom of our list and everything else is moving along pretty nicely. Harrisburg Park coming around 85, 90% and the water storage tank is a little ahead of schedule right now. So for our equipment projects, everything here that's not delayed for, for the COVID impact has either been ordered or we have a quote or somewhere in the ordering and receiving process. You've probably seen some of the pole mounted speed signs out around town. Those have gone up the past couple of weeks. The reason those aren't marked complete is because we have a couple of large signs that are not, the software wasn't up to date on those. They weren't behaving properly. So those are being exchanged, but you should see some of the small ones around town right now. And like I said, everything else here on this list has either been ordered or quotes have been received and the ordering has been processed. And then for our vehicles, we do have movement on the deputy replacement vehicle. That's being picked up next week. The fire engine we'll discuss later tonight, but it is on track and doing well. The leaf truck has been received and it just needs tag and title to get out on the road. And then our two vehicles from fiscal year 20, the Chevy Silverado, actually both Silverados for water and sewer, those, the first one has been received and the second one is nearly here. They just need some of the accessories added and then they'll be good to go. And our professional services projects also moving along from last month. The transportation plan, you'll hear about tonight and the UDO update is going well from what Sushil says. I know that they are working on getting the software platform established to be able to communicate with the public on that here soon. So good progress on all of our professional service projects as well. Some other things going on in the finance department right now. On Wednesday, if approved tonight, we will close on the Smeale Fire Engine financing contract. We've also gone through planning and some of the initial steps to offer two debt issuances this year in the spring. And so we have accumulated or plan to accumulate about a million and a half in transportation bond expenditures. And so we'll try to issue those bonds in April. And then we should also have about $4 million of water sewer projects lined up to offer a debt issuance at that point as well. So we have to have about five and a half million of debt related to our major projects in town issued this fiscal year. The fiscal year 2020 audit is, preparation is underway right now and all through August. And we do have field work scheduled for the first week of September. And then the customer service and finance team have been working to put together all of our options related to payment arrangements and all the requirements on the town for the executive orders 124 and 142, as we've talked about for months now. And we've got an agenda item tonight to discuss how we're going to treat those payment arrangements. And then we also applied for a FEMA grant and have moved through some of the preliminary stages and have been approved for $131,000 in expenditures, which would, at a 75-25 match, would give us about $100,000 towards our PPE expenditures. And that's in addition to any of the CARES Act money that we've gotten so far. So that's pretty much what's been going on in finance over the last month and I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Hey Brian, Councilman Russo here. How long is that fire, fire engine financed for?
It is, it's 10 years. It goes about a week over since we're closing on August 12th, our last payment's on September 1st, but we're calling it a 10-year financing.
How you like your new job?
I love it. I love it a lot. Thank you very much.
You're doing a fine job. I appreciate you. Thanks for stepping in and picking up the slack.
Thank you so much.
Does that mean that Lee was slack?
Which Lee didn't have to move on. That was Lee's choice.
Just trying to make sure you clarify that, Eric.
Somebody good like Brian. I appreciate your help.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you good, Mr. Haynes? All right, moving on. So just a couple of things. Sustainability Committee, I submitted bylaws to Haynes that will hopefully get to Rich and we were going to talk about it this month, but we'll go ahead and defer unless you've got something up on that to maybe next month actually approve whatever gets changed between now and then with regards to, they're very similar to existing bylaws inside the town. I'm just looking to formalize this board and make sure that it's sustainable. Okay, and Rich is in review of this. So I'd like to probably take that to the next meeting and go ahead and formalize the approval of that board after Rich reviews those bylaws. and go ahead and formalize the approval of that board after Rich reviews those bylaws. Then Harrisburg Equity Task Force, we've got some new members, which is exciting. We do have Lieutenant Meesimer who joined us, as well as Hickory Ridge High School student who's from the Indian community, so we're excited about that. Some of the things that'll be focused on is we're actually collecting data around, from the police perspective, anything related to race with regards to arrests, with traffic stops, as well as around schools. So we're getting some information from the schools as well as health. We're also looking to create an online survey, something that hopefully doesn't cost that much. We could leverage some online functions to just find out what the community's thinking from a racial perspective. So we're excited about moving forward on that, and that meeting's next Monday. So that's all I got. I will go to council for any comments.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I have two things, please. First of all, the taxes. I was glad to see someone speak up about that. I've had several people be concerned about their tax bill that they received a couple of weeks ago, and I pointed out that they needed to come speak, but they did want me to pass that alone that they were concerned about the rise in the tax bill. The other thing is the UDO Steering Committee. When we had that firm come and speak to the planning zoning and the council, Haynes, I had asked during that night, was there gonna be a way that I, as a council person, could see and go out and read all the comments that were being submitted by the residents? Can you give me a status on that, and if that's gonna be applicable?
Sushil may be the better person to answer that question. I don't know if he has access to come on and answer that. Sushil, are you available?
Councilwoman Rodney, could you repeat the question? I lost connection, and I just caught the tail end of it.
Sure, not a problem. The night that we met with the steering, well, the council and the planning and zoning board met with the firm that is doing the study for us, I had brought to your attention and asked, would there be a way that the council members could go and see the raw data or the answers or the responses that were being returned by the public? He said that there was a way. I just wanted to know, is that available where I can see that now, or any of the council member could see that?
Yes, so you're referencing the survey. Yes, we can provide that raw data to you.
Okay, just let me know how to look at it, whether it's link or you want to wait till the end. I appreciate that. Thank you, Sushil.
Yeah, we'll wait until the survey is closed. We'll prepare a summary, and I will also provide a raw data for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Councilman Russo, Haynes, this might be for you. Is the Ruthland Station 2 finally done and completed and everything's fine?
It is my understanding that that is correct. I will confirm with Chief Dunn that that has been done, but yes, that is my understanding.
I just haven't heard nothing about it, so I figured it was fixed. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mayor, I have two things. One, the, I got word over the weekend, the HYA monument, officially or unofficially, was completed. Just kudos out to those that were involved, Mark and Rec, Haynes and Daniel. I did hear from the Rutgers that you got a chance to go out and see it Friday night. Very emotional for them, but they're very, very appreciative for everything that was recognized there. But it's also a great monument to those that created the HYA program and its legacy that it has built over the years. So thank you for that. My other question, Haynes, is where are we at with the police study?
Yeah, so very, in a very similar position, unfortunately, than as we were last month when we discussed it or the last time that we addressed this. So they are, they have completed a draft version of it. However, they are still working through the final details of what their recommended plan for us to be to roll out would look like in the event or when we decide that that is the necessary course of action for us to take. So I will follow up and get a more specific end deadline for them on their front, because it's been sort of held up with some of these minor details as they finalize their draft.
Thank you.
What else from council? Last call.
Hey, Mayor Ian here. Is it possible to get a copy of that draft report, or is it too premature for that?
I can see if it's possible to share. No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll confirm with the consultant.
Okay. Other thing, I saw in the sheriff's report, and I've been hearing rumblings around town and heard some things about, in a couple of particular neighborhoods about some larcenies, some BNE and motor vehicle larcenies, and I didn't know if it was worth kind of looking at those neighborhoods more closely. It seems to be happening between about 2:00 and 5:00 AM, and maybe even a reminder on social media to, you know, keep your cars locked if they're out, and your valuables out if they're out in the driveway. And then the other thing I've heard from a few people about is, I believe, previous council passed a solicitation ordinance. As summer months go, there's a lot of solicitation out there, so maybe that's a social media blast as well on how people can report solicitations. Certainly, when I come to my house, I ask if they have a permit, and the answer, of course, is always yes. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. So maybe it's worth a social media blast on solicitations.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that, and we can encourage folks to contact us if they do run into solicitors that don't have that. To my knowledge, we haven't issued any solicitation permit, so if they tell you they have one, that's likely a untrue statement.
That'd be my guess. Maybe people just aren't aware that we have the ordinance. I saw a couple of people say that the HOA had a rule, but that they may not have been aware that the town did. So I appreciate that, and that's all I had.
Yeah, and if you hear from those folks, feel free to contact, give them in contact with staff, because our law enforcement can work with them to establish and enforce that ordinance at a greater length. So yeah, feel free to pass those folks on to us, and we'll get them connected.
Don't confuse those census workers with solicitors. I did see what they read last week. So they're out. Be looking.
So with Logan out, who's helping out, and what is in our protocol to make sure that if we have any comments around any of our media outlets, that we notify who?
Yeah, so Logan's responsibilities are currently being largely managed by our events and marketing coordinator and our Parks and Recreation Department, and our Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. But Logan's also doing a great job of keeping us in the loop and keeping in touch, even though she's out on maternity leave. I see her join the call tonight, so she's still with us.
That's not legal.
No, it's not. I'm not paying her for tonight to work.
Any other questions from council? All right, here now, we're gonna move to old business. I'm assuming we can combine C and D. It's kind of the same discussion, however we need to. We'll go with 5A. Rod, if you want to kick us off as to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So here's my concern, and I assume that now it's out in public. We did have a closed session about bringing this back. So now I would think that anything can be said, correct, Rick, from, Rich, from the closed session meeting? No? All right, then that's fine. My concern is that-
I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. We can't discuss, we can discuss part of what was in closed sessions that relates to this item. You can't discuss everything that was in closed session on it. Just the parts that relate to what's on the agenda.
Yeah, basically, you can discuss the actionable item that came out of closed session, but not the reasons or the discussion that took place in closed session.
Then it seems like there was, there's part of that meeting that should have been put on that line item to indicate part of the real reason. It seems like it's missing a reason other than just there were audio or video problems.
Any comments on that?
And so let me go ahead and ask. So what if we have audio/video problems again next time, and we're doing it by teleconferencing? We're doing it by Zoom meeting?
Yeah, it's been explained to the applicant, and will be explained to future applicants, that, you know, that's why we're giving it the two meetings, so that there's an opportunity to clarify anything that may have happened or been said in the public hearing before a vote is cast. And so it'll be an end result after we go through this process moving forward. There won't be an opportunity to present that unless there is a real, you know, claim that some reason why disconnect or whatever occurred that we would need to consider rehearing it or hearing it at a future meeting.
I had a concern, and Rodney, thank you for bringing that out. I'm trying to understand what you can say and what you can't say. I just understood it would be a in-person meeting. And from your earlier explanation, developer agreed to hear it in a Zoom meeting, but I thought it was also consensual with council. And this, you know, this was the first time we saw of it, not heard that this was even being considered. So did council not get a voice in any of that?
Yeah, yes, that's why you get to vote tonight. So if you decide not to schedule the public hearing for September, October, then it will not be heard again until in-person meetings are allowable.
What implications does that have, so that we're all understanding of what's on the table then?
I think the end result was the applicant asked to be reheard due to what they felt were complications, and the council agreed to do that in a future in-person meeting. As I mentioned in response to Jenny's comments earlier, the, when are we going to have an in-person meeting again is unknown at this time. And so when we made that decision in May to rehear the case, I don't think any of us understood that it might be springtime or longer before we have an in-person meeting. And so giving the applicant the opportunity to now meet the procedures that we have put in place is what's under consideration tonight. Again, if council chooses not to reschedule the public hearing, the applicant will have to wait until an in-person meeting occurs for their public hearing.
The legislature has stepped in in the meantime with this 24-hour wait after you have a vote on a public hearing matter. And so that had occurred in the meantime, which kind of create, which the town has interpreted to mean that we have the public hearing one month, and we vote on the next in order to satisfy that requirement. That happened in the meantime since you voted, and I think that's part of what Haynes is talking about. But still, as you pointed out, the vote was that you would rehear it in an in-person meeting. That's what you voted on, so.
And that's what I remember. That's why, I mean, I appreciate him bringing it out.
Well, and Haynes, so you're glad you said it, so I appreciate that. That was my understanding. The vote that night was that it would be held in person, and that's not what this recommendation or this item is addressing tonight.
Councilman Russo, if I may, Haynes, I think it would be better if we would do it in an in-person meeting, but I definitely understand where you are with it, because we really don't know what's going on, what's gonna happen. I think that we would be more specific, seeing everything in person, in person meeting. I know you, I know you know that also.
Yeah, obviously, that would be the preferred choice. I think that once council established and adopted the planning procedures last meeting, I think that gave some clarity that we didn't have back in May. And so again, that's why it's there for your choice to schedule the public hearing. If you don't want to schedule the public hearing, we can wait for an in-person meeting whenever that may be.
Any more discussion on that? We can, we can do these one at a time and see how this goes.
Well, this is Councilman Patrick. I, what assurances do we have that, you know, barring any catastrophic failure of the Zoom system, let's say, that the applicant has been made aware that they have agreed to do the Zoom session, and that we will know, we will not entertain a further request to rehear in person after this? Because I could just see this, you know, snowballing and occurring again and again and again, and I don't want to set that precedent.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea and a good point, and we can certainly have an agreement signed with the applicant that they understand that if they move forward under our current, our new procedures that we've established, that there won't be a claim unless there is some sort of catastrophic virtual failure of our meeting.
And I'm assuming that the one-year clock starts at the time of the next, either approval or denial. If it gets to nine, it would be one year from October.
Correct.
We're ready to vote? I'll entertain a motion to approve 5A, which is to set a public hearing for September 14th to consider annexation of property on 7800 Robinson Church. I saw lips moving. Was that you, Troy? Anybody?
Yeah, motion to approve.
We got a motion on the floor to approve 5A. I have a second, properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Hang on one second, I gotta, guys messed me up. I have to go to my second cheat sheet. Councilman Ron?
Nay.
Councilman John?
Aye.
Councilman Rodney?
Nay.
Councilman Ian?
Nay.
Councilman Rick?
Nay.
Councilman Troy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diamond? Motion fails. So I'm assuming we can do the same for the next one, but obviously the first one went, so the second one's gonna have to follow. So we'll go right to entertain a motion for 5B to set a public hearing to consider conditional reselling for zoning map amendment property 7800. And you guys can motion to deny or not approve. We don't have to go, we can go in the other direction, too.
Motion to deny.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second, Rodney.
Probably second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron?
Aye.
Councilman John?
Nay.
Councilman Rodney?
Aye.
Councilman Ian?
Aye.
Councilman Rick?
Aye.
Councilman Troy?
Nay.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, we're gonna move to new business, Consideration of Town of Harrisburg Utility Account Payment Arrangement Program.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council. For our first item of new business tonight, we have the Executive Order 124, 142 Utility Account Payment Arrangement Program. And I just want to start off by saying there is a lot of information wrapped up in this item, and we could probably have a meeting just regarding this. So I am gonna try to run through it quickly, but if you have any questions along the way, please feel free to stop me. We can talk about those. But I will just jump right into it. So I wanted to start with a summary of actions that has been required of us or that we have taken from March 1st through July 29th, the period, the substantial period of the executive order. So we were required to suspend our $10 late fee for non or underpayment of utility charges that are due by the 15th of the month. We suspended physical disconnection for non or underpayment. We reconnected any currently disconnected customers. We were required to communicate through mail, bill inserts, or alerts- We were required to communicate through mail, bill inserts or alerts, website and social media of all the changes and all the provisions that we're providing to our customers. We were required to suspend our $100 reconnection fee. And as a council, you decided to suspend credit card convenience fees during this period, although that was not required by the executive order. And we were also required to report our delinquent accounts and our unassessed fees, so kind of the stats of what was going on during this period to the state utility commission on a monthly basis. And we filed our last report last week. So council action that was taken on April 13th this year, we applied the executive order coverage to commercial and industrial customers, so it covers all of our customer base. We applied a waiver of fees and penalties assessed to, that were assessed in March, that was technically before the executive order period. And then, like I said, we discontinued credit card convenience fees. So the executive order 142 has some ongoing requirements that last for the next six months. So from July 30th for the next six months, these are some of the requirements that we're going to have in place. So we are not allowed to charge that $10 late fee for customers as defined in the groups below. We cannot assess that fee or any sort of punitive fee to these customers during this period. We have to break up our customers into three distinct groups. So we've got Group A, these are people that had a delinquent balance before March 1st. So not related to COVID, not related to the pandemic, they already had a delinquency on their account heading into the pandemic. Group B are people that were current beforehand but went delinquent sometime during March 1st to July 29th. Those are the people that we legally have to require or that we have to offer a payment arrangement to. And then Group C are customers that have a balance that both originated before March 1st and had delinquencies that were incurred during the period. So you have three different distinct groups of customers there. And we are actually proposing that we have a fourth group, which I'll get into a little later. So continuing on with the requirements of the executive order, we're required to offer this payment arrangement to any customers who went delinquent during that period of time. Those arrangements must, must be, as defined by the state, a reasonable arrangement. And that means that it is equal fixed monthly installment or a predetermined or pre-arranged fixed percentage of the monthly bills going forward to be added to that monthly bill. I'm a fan of the equal fixed monthly installments. I think it's easier for all those involved, especially staff, but also for the customer to know what's headed their way over the next number of months. We're required to offer at least a six-month term. And the terms of the arrangement and the repercussions of failing to adhere to that arrangement must be clearly outlined in both our communication to them and on the face of the agreement. So once we have these arrangements, and we'll make some decisions on what the arrangements look like, but once we have those established, what happens if a customer misses a payment? I think it's important to know what we're in store for, what kind of decisions we're going to make going forward so that we can craft our payment arrangements properly. So if they miss a payment on the payment arrangement, the customer will be disconnected for non-payment. So they have not adhered to their payment arrangement and they will be disconnected. We cannot charge a $10 late fee and we cannot charge the $100 reconnection fee. So if someone misses the payment arrangement payment, the only thing that they need to do is pay their payment arrangement payment to get their services turned back on. So no fees, but they will be disconnected. We are not permitted to accelerate the remaining payments on their payment arrangement and make those due right now to restore service. So they're, they're only responsible for their one payment arrangement payment that is due. So how does that customer get their service restored? Like I said, they have to miss, they have to pay that missed or underpaid arrangement payment, and then they have to be current on the current month's bill as well. So a couple more requirements over the next at least six months is related to fees. So I talked about not being able to apply the $10 late fee to customers that have a payment arrangement. Well, the executive order inadvertently extended the late fee provision for six months while it was attempting to extend the payment arrangement requirement for six months. So the executive order had a clause in it that required us to offer these payment arrangements. For that to be enforceable upon us, they had to set a period of time that that executive order applies. In the same paragraph as the payment arrangement requirement was the provision that did not allow us to charge these late fees. And so by extending that entire paragraph by six months, it meant that we can't charge this $10 late fee to any of our customers, whether they're on the payment arrangement or not. And that, that has admittedly been, been said by the state that it was not on purpose, but it's something that we're, we're stuck with. And we're, and we're choosing to take the conservative route and not assess those fees just given the exposure that that may put us in going forward. All other fees and penalties are permitted related to utility accounts. So we will restore our $100 reconnection fee for non EO qualified customers. And a non EO qualified customer would be one who did not incur delinquency during the March 1st to July 29th period. So here's a simple graph of our delinquent accounts right now. It's also important to know what the numbers look like that we're, that we're discussing here. And I'm very happy actually to, to say that we only have 204 accounts delinquent right now as related to our last disconnection. So we have 140 accounts between $0 and $300, 36 between $300 and $500, 21 accounts between $500 and $810, and seven accounts over $810. So there was actually a bit of improvement from the last time we looked at these numbers last month. Breaking those up between residential and commercial, we have 187 residential customers with an average balance of $295. And we have 17 commercial or industrial customers who are averaging about $600. All right, so my, my recommendations, our staff recommendations related to all of this, there's a number of them. And what we're proposing is that each affected a customer, each affected customer must have a signed agreement in place by the end of the day, end of the business day on September 14th, 2020. So we will send out letters in the next day or two, depending on what is approved tonight. And that will give our customers about 30 days to respond to us and sign up for their payment arrangement. If a customer also has a balance that has become past due as of August 15th, so this is a customer who may be delinquent all through the payment arrange, all through the executive order period, they're also going to have a balance that was billed on July 20th and due on August 15th. So what we don't want to do is have them sign up for an arrangement on August 14th and then turn around and have a balance that we need to disconnect them for. So what we want to do is open up our eligible balances to anything that, that is due that would be considered past due after August 15th or up until August 15th. So customers will have the ability to elect up to an 18-month agreement instead of six months as required by the executive order. And if on this plan, in good standing, no interest or late fees can be charged on these balances throughout the payment arrangement for 18 months. So for our non EO customers, so people that have a balance that became delinquent after July 29th, they are subject to disconnection and $100 reconnection fee. So if you are not part of this plan at all and you do not elect to sign up for a payment arrangement by our due date of September 14th, then you will be eligible for disconnection on the September disconnect date of the 25th. No late fees for any customer type through January 31st, 2021, related to that extension of the executive order. And so our first $10 late fee will resume application on February 15th of 21. So I wanted to show you how payments will be applied. It's also important for customers to understand this. The executive order states that you must pay your payment arrangement balance first. Your payment then goes to your current balance due, and then any overpayment is applied to your outstanding payment arrangement balance. It's not going to reduce your remaining, you know, if you overpay in your first month, it's not going to reduce your next 17 payments, it's going to come off at the end. So we're not going to recalculate that monthly payment if you overpay. So for example, if you have a customer that has a $500 balance, 450 of that is a payment arrangement over 18 months, that would be $25 a month. And their current bill is $50, then this box right, right in the middle of the screen is what your bill would look like. So you have a current bill due of $50, your first of 18 payment arrangement payments of 25, and so your balance due on September 15th, if this is a, the first payment set up for somebody, would be $75 on September 15th. If the customer were to pay $90 here, then we're going to get the 25 of the payment arrangement, 50 on the current bill, and then 15 will go to the end of their payment arrangement and reduce that outstanding balance. All right, so to summarize our staff recommendations, the $10 late fee, we want to suspend for all customer types through January 31st, 2021. Customers in all three groups we're proposing will universally be offered this 18-month arrangement. So anyone who has an outstanding balance of any kind, we want to offer the helping hand and let them come in and set up this arrangement and get back on track. So we're going to have more people than the 204 we just saw that are probably going to want to sign up for this arrangement. And in our opinion, it's, it's in everyone's best interest to get that payment arrangement signed and have small balances paid over the next couple of months or, or the next number of months versus having one of our customers have further struggles through this pandemic and be disconnected or potentially see fees in the future. So we want to include those customers who become delinquent for the first time on August 15th and make them eligible for payment arrangement plans. And those plans are, have an opt-in requirement by September 14th, and like I said, have an 18-month fixed monthly installment. So this will require us to amend our schedule of fees that we've amended over the past couple of months a few times. The $10 late fee will show as suspended. We will show that the $100 reconnection fee will be reinstated for customers incurring delinquency after August 15th. And the effective date ranges for this version of the fee schedule will be from July 30th to January 31st, 2021. And we will reinstate the credit card convenience charges. So I want to quickly go over the fiscal impacts of all these decisions. The suspension of the $10 late fee, while legally required, will cost the town about $86,000 from March to next January. The suspension of credit card fees, what we have incurred so far in March through July is about $18,500. The suspension of the $100 reconnection fee for that same period, March through July, has amounted to just over $127,000. And our current delinquent balance total of these 204 customers is right at $65,000. So there's a lot of information that I just presented. I definitely want to answer any questions that you have. But our suggested motion tonight would be to approve the town of Harrisburg EO 124, 142 Utility Account Payment Arrangement Program and the amended fiscal year 2021 COVID-19 schedule of fees as attached.
Hey Brian, this is Diamond. I do have a question. For the letters that are going to be mailed out to the residential customers, will we be providing them with any community resource in that letter as well? Any connection with Cooperative Christian Ministry to help get that bill paid?
We, we don't have anything in the draft of the letter that we have ready right now that we plan to send out tomorrow or the next day. But we, we have refreshed our community list and we have 10 or 12, well, eight or 10 organizations that we have already reached out to and confirmed with them that they are ready to help our customers and that they have funds available. And so we have an updated list, it's in customer service. And when our customers call in to set up these plans, we are definitely going to send that sheet to them and, and offer any help that they can get outside of our waiving of fees and payment arrangements.
Can that not be included in the letter that's going to be sent out to them as well?
We definitely could do that. Yeah, we could amend that.
Would it, would it make more sense to point them to the COVID-19 site and just have it on our COVID-19 website? So it could be dynamic if it changes and up to date? Donald, would that be more acceptable or do you want to see it in writing?
I think it can be in addition too.
Okay.
I think both of them are wise decisions to have them both. On meetings I was in today, it was surprising to me that within our community in Paveras County, we have about 10% of our residents that do not have online connectivity. And I think sending out that letter also would be in our best interest.
We can do that.
So Brian, this is Rodney. How are you, this is, this is in, this is tense. This seems to be complex. How are you going about actually doing it? Are the ladies up front going to have to be doing it by hand? Is it going to be a spreadsheet? Will the computer software handle it going forward? How is that going to be handled?
Our software, luckily, about four or five months ago, we got with our software developer and made sure that our payment arrangement program was working because we already offer payment arrangements all throughout the year. So they worked with us to get that set up and it actually works just as the executive order wants it to. It applies payments to your payment arrangement, then to your current balance, then back to your arrangement. It shows on the bill very clearly, like I showed in the middle of the page. So our software does it all. However, we are going to track each and every one of these people separately ourselves and make sure that we make the, the human contact with them and follow up with them throughout their arrangement, make sure that they don't get an erroneous bill that says it's all due at one time or something like that. So because we only have a couple hundred, that's something that we can, we can have our hands around and make sure that, that that set of customers doesn't have errors in their bills or doesn't have issues during this 18-month period.
Well, that's good to know that the software handles it. I was just wondering if there was any way to make this whole thing simpler? And I would like to get council's input here that, you know, considering that we have raised taxes, we are receiving more tax money than we thought we would, is there any way that we can help the community during this time and forego some of these, forego some of these payments? If we look into that, is that possible? Is that a conversation that we as council want to have? And I'll put that out to other members.
Thanks Rodney. I have some similar concerns. Maybe a couple of questions first before I voice those. Brian, in terms of the credit card convenience fees, are those pass-through fees that we just get via our software?
The, we pay the processing fee and then we charge $2.50 to our customers. And our, the fee that we pay is somewhere around half of that, depending on our quantity that month.
So we do indeed, I guess, for lack of a better term, turn a profit on credit card convenience fees?
A slight, slight profit.
A slight profit, okay. And then another concern I have is, you know, with the school year coming up, a lot of, a lot of parents are having to kind of shift their, shift their balances around to try to figure out ways for childcare so they can keep working. Presumably many of the customers that are having this issue, you know, may, may or may not have that option or have jobs that they, they need to go to. So if I heard you correctly, once they missed one payment, they're removed from the program? Is that correct?
No, the, the only thing that they're required to do if they miss one payment is make sure their current month's bill is paid and then also their one missed payment arrangement payment. So you, you could be, if you're in this payment arrangement and you miss a payment, you could be disconnected that month. Then all you need to do is, if, in the case of the example we have before, pay your $25 for your one payment arrangement, missed payment, and your service is reconnected. And so that could, you could see that happen every month, going back and forth, disconnect, pay the one payment, reconnect. But there's no other penalties and no other accelerated balances due.
Okay, so they're, they would be eligible to stay within, there's, there's no case in which they'd be removed from the plan that we've set forth?
That's correct.
So, I mean, I, I feel generally in line with Rodney about maybe we can look into some of the people that are really struggling. I'm, I'm not talking about sort of repeat offenders who have done this since, you know, 2019, but some people are just really struggling to have, to, to make ends meet. Maybe we can, we can look at some of those and making sure, or even possibly forgiving some of those items and just getting them reconnected and getting them back on their feet. But also that maybe we continue to, regardless of the executive order, continue to allow credit card convenience fees to be waived, given that some people may not be able to visit the office or things like that.
Brian, Councilman Smith here. I had a question with regards to, you noted in your presentation that there's a date, I think it is, as long as they sign up by September fourteenth, I think it was. While that sounds like a doable date today, we don't know what September looks like, what, say, November may look like. Is that date something that can be revisited in time? I mean, if we're still where we are in November, suddenly, I think you even see another wave of folks having challenges with bills because of continued either layoffs or not able to find employment. So I don't want to get us in a position where we hard code a date today and then we find ourselves unable to adjust it in the future.
Right. The date that we picked, the fourteenth, is just to line up with our billing, and it gave everyone about thirty days to respond. Because on the fifteenth, those people that haven't signed up would technically fall back into where they could be disconnected later that month. So we want to hear from everybody, and we want to get everyone in and sign these arrangements. And so if they're not receiving any communication or just don't want to respond, then sometimes the disconnect is the way to get their attention and get them to sign up for the payment plan, knowing that we're not causing them any sort of additional financial stress by disconnecting their service. So that's really our only method to try to get people to come in and sign up for that arrangement. I'm sorry, I have a lot of, have a lot of noise going on here. I'm sorry.
Brian, I was going to ask, this is Diamond again. Are we able to place calls to these one hundred and eighty, one hundred and eighty-seven? Is that correct, residents at all?
I'm sorry?
Are we able to place telephone calls to these residents at all?
Yes, we are actually going to call each person that, we're going to send the letter out to everyone, just in case someone goes delinquent in the next two weeks. But we are going to touch base with every single person on the list.
Okay.
Just to kind of wrap up with Rodney and Ian we're talking about, can we go to staff to maybe come up with a plan on debt forgiveness and what that would look like and how long would qualify, just to make sure it's not somebody that's habitually doing this and then trying to work the system?
Mayor, would any of the CARES money from the county be able to help cover that at all? All the CARES has gone to the community agencies, right?
It has gone out, but they specifically do not allow for lost revenue as one of the uses of those funds.
Wouldn't be for lost revenue, it would be for helping folks that need it, right?
The only, the only way that you can offset water sewer revenues is to use property taxes. So that's the only caveat here is we have to use property tax revenue if you want to do any sort of forgiving of balances or waiving of fees.
But we did hear in Haynes's weekly email, the other, correct me if I'm wrong, Haynes, that we are doing pretty well in collecting taxes during this COVID period. True or false?
So, collection for sales tax, sales tax specific, no other revenues consideration, but sales tax specific came in for the month of July ahead of our projection. Obviously, our budget year began July first, so it's only a one-month capture of us moving forward. Certainly, there's going to be some, if that trend continues, then yes, we can look at that. But I also wanted to just mention that the town council has a special projects fund that's part of the general fund budget that are dollars that are earmarked for projects that you guys identify throughout the year. So if this is something that you want to, I believe Brian mentioned that there was about sixty-five thousand dollars in delinquent bills that had gone unpaid. So if you wanted to apply some or a portion or all of the special project fund dollars to that, that could be an option for council to consider.
So this is Councilman Patrick. I think we could probably still approve this motion and ask staff to look into what support the town might be able to provide for some of these newly delinquent customers. But I would, I would still be in favor of continuing the convenience fee, getting rid of the convenience fee as we have been doing.
Would you want that for the same time period of until January thirty-first?
I'm not sure, because, as you know, nobody knows what's coming up the street. I don't know how we structure that. I mean, I'm sure council could revisit it at any time.
Yeah, and we would have to bring the fee schedule back to you at January thirty-first anyways to approve it going back to its original form. So we'll have that discussion at that time regardless.
Brian, are those dates set by the state? Is that the direction we're following here?
They, all the dates that are July twenty-ninth forward are set by the state. You know, we went back an additional thirty days to March first, and so we provided that extra coverage, but every date going forward is set by the state.
And if the governor extends it again, whatever we decide tonight will continue along his same extension, is that correct?
It would. Anytime that he's approved an executive order, it overrides any of our current fee schedules and policies. So if he were to come back and reinstate one of these executive orders or one like them, we would essentially probably throw away all the payment arrangements we set up and start over whenever that executive order is completed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Brian, Councilman Russo here. So are we covering everybody that's not working or can't pay their bills, or how are we defining who we are paying the bills for?
Now, are you referring to if we choose to waive any account balances?
Right.
I will look at that. We definitely have a list of repeat offenders, and we have people that are constantly being disconnected or getting these reconnection charges. And so I think what would be best is for me to bring that data to you and just let you see the raw data there.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
What kind of motion do you need? I mean, Brian noted that there were several amendments that he was bringing forward.
The motion as it reads right now, let's see if we can go back here, would do these, would do these four items right here, as well as-
So this is a package, right? This is the payment arrangement program as a whole?
Yes. Yeah.
We'd be approving the payment arrangement program.
Yes, and the credit card fees are a separate thing from all of this, so you could just amend your motion to keep the credit card fees off for another six months.
Brian, do we know what the cost to the town is for reconnection? Is it a hundred?
The actual cost to the town?
Yeah.
We don't have exact numbers on that. I wouldn't want to speculate. We can, we could get you something. It's obviously not a hundred dollars, but that cost is meant for us to recover the actual cost to go and disconnect and then reconnect someone's account.
Right. I'm just, I don't want to pile, you know, for someone who's struggling, I don't want to pile any of the town's quote-unquote profit on top of them.
Right.
So if the council feels like, excuse me, reconnection fees or credit card processing fees are legitimate, I would like to see that at a zero profit amount. And I don't, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but, you know, just cover our costs and move on and try to help people out as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, Ian, and that's a very good point, and we agree with you. We actually do recommend not moving forward with the one-hundred-dollar disconnect fee. They will still be disconnected physically for not payment, but they will not actually have that hundred-dollar disconnect fee added on there. Now, the convenient fee for the credit card, that's something that we can certainly consider pausing, as well as you recommended.
I'll give the motion for the EO one-twenty-four slash one forty-two utility account payment as arrangement program and the amended FY two thousand and twenty-one COVID-nineteen schedule fees as attached is what Brian has provided us with the reduced transaction fee.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor, properly, second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron?
Aye.
Councilman John?
Aye.
Councilman Rodney?
Aye.
Councilman Ian?
Aye.
Councilman Rick?
Aye.
Councilman Troy?
Aye.
Councilman Diamond?
Aye.
Question carries. Next up, AT&amp;T Cellular Equipment Lease Renewal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Let me see if I can get this pulled up here.
Lee, while you're doing that, Brian, we can expect to hear more from you next month on the other discussion items that we discussed. Is that correct?
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
He lost the sound, sorry. He's having technical difficulties over there.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and jump in. Hopefully, everybody can hear me and see my screen here. Going to go through consideration of sale lease. Some of you have been here for a while and have gone through a few of these. This is actually the last one we have up on our tower right now to renegotiate at this point or extend the lease, renew it. So this will be the last one in the cycle. But so kind of give you a little background of where we are on all these. So we're talking right now about the existing water tower on Rocky River Road. And currently, there are three providers that have equipment on the top of that water tower, and those are AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon. Each of those are individually negotiated, and all the revenue goes into the Water and Sewer Fund. And as of fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we had just shy of eighty-seven thousand dollars coming in for all three of those sale lease revenues. So the process that we go through on these is always started by the less C. And so usually, whenever you get to the end or near the end of the lease life, they'll go ahead and reach out to us and either tell us they're going to, either they are or they will not renew the lease. And if they want to renew the lease, then we'll go into negotiations. The last three have all been done through Black Dot, which is a company that specializes in doing these lease renewals. So basically, all the AT&amp;Ts and Verizans and T-Mobils, they'll go out to Black Dot and engage them to get with us to negotiate what they can do on the new leases. So for this current lease that we're talking about this evening, AT&amp;T notified us back in November that they wanted to renegotiate. This is a little different than normal because we still had almost a couple of years left in the lease. So that's kind of atypical. Usually, they'll get with you in the last year of the lease. But we went ahead and I heard from Black Dot in May and began discussions from that point. And basically, Rich and myself worked for the most part. We did have some help from some other individuals throughout the process, but we worked for about three months to negotiate the best deal for the town. So we had a lot of back and forth until we finally got to what we're going to present to you tonight. So currently, the existing lease that we have right now expires in May of two thousand and twenty-two. The agreement was built with an annual three percent escalator. And currently, we're bringing in about two thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month. And if you work that out through the rest of, through the May twenty-two period, that's about sixty thousand dollars. So when Black Dot first came to us, they gave us an initial offer, and what they wanted to do was to actually forego the last two years of the current agreement and begin a new agreement in August of two thousand and twenty with a five-year initial term and then five additional five-year terms. So state statutes actually only allow us to do up to twenty-five years. So the thirty-year period they were proposing wasn't really possible, but we certainly could look back at a twenty-five-year term. They were offering a seven-and-a-half percent escalator every five years, and they wanted to start at eighteen hundred dollars a month for a total value, if all of the extension periods were accepted and done, would be six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So with these back and forths that we did, we slowly got them up to where we felt like we had the best possible rates and contract details that we could present to you. We felt like we couldn't get any more out of them. And basically, what we came up with is we wanted to stay with the existing term. We know that every one of these new lease agreements, we negotiate, we start backwards. So you spend twenty years or ten years or whatever that period is, building those lease payments with the escalators up throughout the period, and then, so the rate is pretty high. And then you go back and renegotiate these, and they always start low and build back up. So what we wanted to do was keep taking advantage of what our existing rates were at the high end towards the back end of this lease. So we got to do that. And then on top of that, so that's two years, on top of that, what we negotiated was an initial ten-year term. What happens there is that locks us in to that revenue stream for, in this case, twelve years, the two remaining years that we have with the existing lease and ten additional years beyond that. And from that point, there's three five-year extensions, so that makes up the twenty-five total years. One of the biggest things I feel like we did really good on was we got the escalator up, and we also got it done after the first five years. So we'll have, the first term is ten years, but we'll actually have a five-year, after the first five years, we'll have a ten percent escalator on that. And then at the beginning of each five-year period after that, we'll have an additional escalator there, but that ten percent. So we will start out at two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a month, and that would give us a total value, if all extension terms are enacted, would be eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So this, I just wanted to kind of show you graphically how this looks from if we just let the term finish out and for the next two years and we didn't get an extension on it, we would be at that sixty thousand. The original proposal had us in that six hundred thousand dollar range, and we got it almost up to nine hundred. So I felt like we really made some good progress on moving that up. You can see here, I wanted to show you again graphically how our current proposed agreement compares to our two existing ones. And so you can see here, the Verizon lease was only negotiated at ten years. Sometimes, depending on what the market does, these entities are willing to go longer than shorter. At the time that we renegotiated Verizon, I think, which was in two thousand seventeen, I believe, they were not wanting to go any further than ten years, so we didn't get much locked in there. T-Mobile, we had at twenty years, and then, of course, the AT&amp;T is at twenty-five. So I wanted to take it a step further there because, obviously, with all these different years, it's hard to compare them. And so what I did was normalize all the Verizon and T-Mobile to the AT&amp;T at twenty-five years. And so this kind of gives you a little better idea of how the current proposed contract compares to what we got out of the last two, which I think you can see is a little higher, and I think we were able to accomplish a lot there. So with that being said, this is the motion that I'd like to put before you if you would like to approve it. So it'll be a motion to approve the attached contract with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is AT&amp;T, to the extent, or to extend the current agreement for the lease of cellular equipment on the elevated water tank at eight-eight-eight-five Rocky River Road for an initial period from June two thousand and twenty-two to May two thousand and thirty-two, with three additional extensions and five-year terms until May two thousand and forty-seven, with the rate to begin at two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a month, with a ten percent rate increase after the first five years and at the beginning of each subsequent five-year term. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Any questions? Or I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor by- Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Russo, seconded by Councilman Salberg. Is that right?
Yes.
I had one question.
Okay.
It, when I read through it in the packet, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, it appeared that the telecom companies had all the leverage, and we really didn't have a whole lot. I mean, if things go as they choose or at their leisure, we're in it for the 20 years. But if they deem that they no longer want it, they can end it after 10, correct?
Correct. And so far, I can tell you, again, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. But so far, while I've been here, we haven't ever had any of these cell providers not go ahead and extend on all of these potential extensions. We have had one that has pulled off because they didn't want to continue forward on it. So we do have an example where they did pull off, but so far, no extensions haven't been exercised that I'm aware of.
I was just afraid if technology changed and we missed out on something. I mean, I could see a 10-year, but at 20, it's, it feels like we could be losing on the backside of that.
And we have the ability, if we so choose not to exercise that, we can do that as well. One of the nice advantages we have, and we're hoping that it'll help us out, is with the new water tower behind Station 2, that offers additional real estate that we could have. Because right now, our current water tank is covered. We can't put anything else on there. So with the new water tank and with it being a little higher, it may provide us another revenue stream that could come in in those later years and maybe even be duplicates of what we have currently further up the road.
Thank you.
So to Councilman Smith's point, yeah, so to Councilman Smith's point, we may have some small, short-term gains to renegotiate now. But when our new water tower comes online, presumably about the time that this current lease expires, we would then be negotiating from a position of strength if they wanted to add to that water tower. Would that not be correct?
Potentially, if they would choose to do that. Nobody has notified us at this point of any interest in that water tank at this point.
Well, I'm under the assumption that they certainly know something that we don't. And I'm sure that's their entire job to, you know, to know these things and how to negotiate properly. I, I.
The insight that we're getting.
Normally, I don't, normally, I don't, and it's usually not allowed to try to renegotiate leases midterm.
Some of the factors, just for pieces of information for consideration, 5G is obviously the new technology that's coming out. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, apologize. So 5G is the new technology coming out. And with that, they're going to smaller pole-mounted antennas. And so you're likely to see them shift away from these large towers, but at the same time, they're still necessary. Around Harrisburg, too specifically, there's been a new cell tower constructed right at 485 in Rocky River Road, which is one of the reasons why we lost the previous carrier that Lee was speaking to. And there's also a new cell tower on Highway 49 in Harrisburg, near Riverwood Estates, that we don't have any control over. So we're facing stronger competition for elevated platforms for these antennas to locate on as well. So we, it's not just us anymore. There are other private entities that are starting to steal and provide competition for us on these cellular carriers.
Assuming council would allow the smaller 5G free-standing units.
We legally cannot prohibit them. State law, General Assembly passed some language recently that restricts us from restricting them.
So we're in a rock and a hard place. We're in a rock and a hard place, and they want to renegotiate because they're there.
Get the money while you can.
All right, fair enough.
We got a motion on the floors, properly seconded. Any more discussion?
I thought that the, it was a long-term also when I first read it. But we can get out, you're saying, Lee, after 10 years if we so desire?
Correct. Either party has the ability within, I'm not sure if it's six, six months, that you have to submit a written notification to the other party that you don't want to do the extension.
All right, thank you. Because I agree, 5G is going to change things going forward.
All right, go to vote. Last call. All in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron.
Aye.
Councilman John.
Aye.
Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. Moving to legal adoption of Highway 49 corridor special revenue fund.
Okay. Item C under new business tonight is a special revenue fund for Highway 49 corridor. So this is related to some UDO requirements. Section E.3.12.2 requires that developments along Highway 49, our interior corridor, bury their utilities, both electric and cable, or pay a fee in lieu of for doing that work. The UDO also requires that before we accept any of those payments for a fee in lieu of, that we establish a special revenue fund to account for these deposits over time, keep them separate from any other operations. And then we must also legally require that the funds be spent on this established purpose, which is to bury utilities along Highway 49. The fee in lieu, how it's going to be implemented, staff began implementing this ordinance in fiscal year 20. Started working with property owners and developers to implement this requirement. It was determined by a lot of our individual property developers not to be practically feasible for them to bury their utilities and have kind of a bouncing up and down effect of one lot having their utilities up in the air, one buried, one up in the air. So it's expensive and it's difficult to do that. And so all of these developers prefer to pay a fee in lieu of and let us accumulate the funds and then have a big, one-time project where we can take, we can get the efficiencies of scale by doing one larger project. So staff has been working with, our planning staff has been working with Duke and our other utility providers to come up with a long-term plan to apply these funds to. When the property is being developed, the payment amount is determined and approved by staff. So the developer will submit a cost estimate for staff review and approval prior to them getting their CO. That estimate is approved by staff. And once it is received by the town, we will put it in the special revenue fund. And it, like I said, is legally required to be spent on this purpose only going forward. The suggested motion tonight is to approve the ordinance establishing the special revenue fund for the Highway 49 corridor to account for fee in lieu of revenues to be held for a Highway 49 corridor underground utility project in the future. And I also want to say that Sushil's on the call. If you have any questions specifically related to the development or how that fee is going to be approved on his side. And then if you have any questions about how the special revenue fund would work, I'd be glad to answer those.
I know across the street has had this opportunity, which probably prompted part of this. Do we have a better understanding of the actual cost to bury the line? Because I know that was kind of a, an unknown because Windstream wasn't cooperating, at least with the developer pushing it back to ask, is the fee in lieu of going to actually cost, cover the cost of their burying that portion of the line?
I'm going to let Sushil jump in on that one.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for that question. So you're referencing to the Harris Square project?
Yes.
And the utilities for 49?
Yes.
In that case, we entered into an agreement with Lat Purser for those three projects along 49. And what we have, not knowing what's underground, may cover for that portion. We're getting $100,000 for those three parcels along 49. But again, as you said earlier, we don't have, we don't have pinned down a methodology, actual method to create, create this cost estimates. We're working with Duke Power to come up with those numbers. We're also trying to get, get the same numbers from Windstream. Based on the research we've done, like with secondary sources not directly applied to us, the cost to bury electric and cable without any unknown, like bedrock or things of that nature, it's, it's close to 2, 2 million per mile. I mean, that's the cost we're looking at. But again, we're trying to do a comprehensive quarter-wide study, at least with Duke, to get an estimate from them, how much it will cost to bury their line. That process has started, but we, we don't have an answer or estimated timeline on when to do the study. But we're working through that. So like, like Brian said, we started a couple of months ago implementing this ordinance. And we soon realized that it's, it's difficult than what we expected. And the intent of the ordinance is not as easy as we thought to implement. Not only from the practicality, but also from working with different utility providers. It's always difficult to get all of them on the same page. And also, not getting timely information was impacting the project review and approval. So I think we made a conscious decision that we'll, we'll work through to get a better estimate for fee in lieu, create this special revenue fund, collect the fund, and probably utilize those funds to do the holistic study, whatever it costs, in partnership with Duke and Windstream. And then, and then as the project comes in, utilize those to create a larger section of the corridor to bury the utilities, whatever makes sense coming out of that study.
So we could end up adjusting the actual fee in lieu of as a result of doing a deeper analysis of the costs.
Once we had that study, we'll have a better number. At this point, we'll just have to go with, since we don't have any, any concrete information, we just have to rely on secondary sources. Yes, sir.
Got it. Thanks.
I'd like to shoot this one over to Haynes. I don't want to see us in a situation of Carthage. And we all understand what happened in Carthage. How do we know that we won't end up in a situation like Carthage? While this is talking about buried power lines, I'm sure somebody could find a way to make a connection and have us in a hot situation.
I think the best way to answer that is by the establishment of this special revenue fund. That's what protects us. So we will only be able to use it for that reason and that reason only. Now, there is no timeline that we have to use it by. So we can begin to accumulate these funds over the years and apply those to this project once we move forward. But, you know, we've all talked about it in our budget meetings, that we're going to have to find a secondary source to assist us with the burial of utilities along Highway 49. There's just too much development that has already take place. And so we can't rely on redevelopment of those sites. So a collection of these fee in loaves, obviously, is going to take an investment of the town as well. But yeah, I think we're solidly protected on that. This is an established and an allowable and legal fee for us to apply or to charge residents via our ordinance. So I think we're very safe there and don't have a Carthage situation on our hand.
Do we have to have a special firm to validate our data?
Yeah, they're all agreed with the individual property owner. So it'll be an agreement that'll be in place with them. So it's a two-party contract at that point.
Okay.
So Haynes, question for you. Assuming, assuming at some point, we move forward with the Highway 49 beautification project, which would almost certainly involve burying of utilities. Would, because it's a special revenue fund, would we have to bid out that portion of the work separately? Because it might be more attractive to a contractor to have that portion in their contract should we move forward with beautification?
I want to make sure that, I don't know if Verizon can answer that.
Your volume's off.
I don't know if Brian wants to answer that.
The thing that would, I'm not sure of a legal requirement there to break it up. But for our purposes, we would definitely want to at least see those items broken out in the bid. It can be in the same bid, but somehow broken out so that we know exactly which funds are being applied to that part of the contract. So I would want to see that very clearly known, but I don't think it needs to be separate in any way.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, because the total dollar value of a potential contract for beautification could include those, could include those items, even though it's a special revenue fund. We just have to make sure that we're applying the funds correctly.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
There's also a far-reaching positive on this. As I've worked with a couple of the developers that are in question here, Duke Power has a lifecycle assessment of those power lines as they need replacement. And if we have funds available at time of lifecycle ending, we can potentially jump in and get some cost savings there. But because of the array of different power lines up and down 49, all of them have a different lifecycle on them right now. But there is a potential, as we move forward in those power lines in the, in their lifecycle, we could actually see some savings there.
Yeah, and to echo that, I don't want to derail it too much, but that's exactly right, that we're already in conversation with Duke Energy about this and how we go about it. And as Sushil mentioned earlier, establishing a long-term plan that involves the utilities is very important for us. And we look forward to fleshing that out over the coming months.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, 10 motion.
Mayor, having heard that, I would motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor? About a second. Properly seconded. All in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron. Councilman John.
Aye.
Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on. Resolution for approving financing terms for Fire Engine 2.
All right. One more of me tonight. Does Sharon properly? Okay, the financing for Fire Engine 2. This slide probably looked familiar to you from last month, but I just wanted to go over the status of the engine one more time. The background on the project has a total project authorization of $615,000 with a few change orders in the construction of the truck. That purchase price is at $599,000, and it was ordered a year ago today. The schedule remaining on the truck, or I'm sorry, not today, almost a year ago. The schedule remaining on the truck is for the fire staff to perform an onsite inspection today. And so they're in Nebraska doing that right now. We will receive delivery of the truck and perform our onsite inspection at the end of this month. And then there will be a little bit of communications equipment added to it, some signage, some training for our firefighters. And then that truck will be placed in service. We have a target date right now of October 1st. And then last time, I had these same two pictures up here on the screen, but forgot to point them out and went by the slide pretty quick. So I thought they were pretty cool, show you that the truck is really round in the corner, especially given that they're a month old. So we're going to have a pretty nice-looking truck here in the next month or so. So the terms that were approved last month were to have an August 12, 2020, closing at a value of $615,000. Our bank is Truist, which is in the BBNT lending division. This is a 10-year bank-qualified financing with semi-annual principal plus interest payments at 1.74% interest. We have a prepayment penalty of only 1% for the first five years and then none for the last five years of the contract. And funds will be held in a Truist escrow account until the truck is received and we make payment on it. So here is a view of the payment schedule that we'll have over the next 10 years. You'll see the principal is level at $31,000 per payment twice a year until 2028, where it drops down to $30,000. And our total debt service each fiscal year starts at $37,000 this year. And we had $81,000 in the budget and then $71,000 and declining by a few thousand each year from there forward. So the suggested motion tonight is to adopt the resolution of the final financing terms for Fire Engine Number 2, which include a $615,000 value and interest rate of 1.74%. which include a $615,000 value, an interest rate of 1.74% and a payment term not to extend beyond September 1st, 2030, and the related financing agreement as attached. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Hey, uh, Brian, one question. We usually pay that fire engine off early, don't we?
We, we have not paid off, um, the last few early. We usually stick to the, to the payment, to the payment agreement. Um, but this one, we, we certainly have the ability to, about any sort of penalty.
I'm a mover approval, Mayor.
Got motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion? Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye. Councilman Ron.
Aye.
Councilman John.
Aye.
Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving to Back Creek, Creek, Greenway Property Acquisition.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight I want to present the Greenway Property Acquisition, um, presentation here. I'm going to get my screen share up going. And if you'll bear with me just a second. so I want to start with just a little bit of history, get going with this. So is my screen up? Are we good?
Yep, you're good.
Thank you. Uh, just a little quick history and then we'll, I got a few slides I just put together just as kind of talking points and sort of review. In your packet, you'll see a detailed, um, description and detail of the whole, uh, project, what we're looking for. Um, so essentially the Back Creek Greenway is the main artery that goes through, uh, Harrisburg. Um, Greenways has been identified in our 2016, uh, Bicycle Pedestrian Comprehensive Master Plan. And the Back Creek section is one of, uh, the higher priority, uh, Greenway alignments, along with the Rocky River Corridor. So some history with this, uh, leaving out, uh, some particulars, but the main is, is that we, uh, were once to believe that we had several, uh, easements and alignments already secure on this, uh, uh, particular Greenway alignment. And we have learned over time since my, uh, looking into it further that that wasn't quite the case. So with that, we, uh, have been given a unique opportunity in the last year with, uh, Water Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County. And they, uh, have, uh, come to us with a, uh, opportunity to, uh, sort of coordinate along with their sewer line interceptor upgrade. And that has been underway for the last year. And with that, they're going to have to go through and make new easement acquisitions for their utility upgrade along much of their existing, but also some additional properties as that interceptor, uh, takes a different route. So with that, we wanted to kind of jump on and, uh, and, and partner with them in kind of getting our acquisitions actually secured along with this Greenway. Um, so with that, I put together just a couple of, just for those who are on or listening and, and don't have any, uh, you know, real background on Greenways. Uh, I wanted to put together just a few slides that kind of highlight just exactly what a Greenway is and just some of its key benefits. Uh, uh, one big thing is that they're truly multi-generational. Uh, anybody and everybody can use them and, uh, they're great alternate modes of transportation. Again, this, this particular alignment would run parallel with, uh, more or less Highway 49 and kind of, uh, splits, uh, Harrisburg North and South. Uh, it ties into the middle school and high schools, uh, a ton of connectivity between business, residential, uh, and all those and the school system as well. So safe routes to school. Uh, there's actually grants that are available for when we're in construction phase for these types of, for funding available. Uh, the quality of life aspects, uh, even increased home value. And then clearly the health and wellness are, you know, some very key features. Uh, moving on in with how, you know, the funding mechanism is. Uh, so in FY21, we have available $21, $20,000 in easement line item. We have 150 in our construction line item for a total of 170,000. So, uh, in front of you tonight is a contract with, um, property, professional property services. Uh, their, their, their measure would be to work with us up to 25 parcels of, of, of easement negotiation, uh, for an amount not to exceed $75,000. Um, so what that would do is leave us a balance of that 170 of 95,000. And also we have a capital reserve fund, uh, allocated to Greenways, uh, for, that's got 177,000 in it. Uh, that would be available for succeeding, uh, construction or also the actual property easement, uh, components. Uh, so to be clear, the contract for 75,000 will afford us the legal, uh, legal administrations, the, uh, conversations, the door-to-door, uh, uh, processes of actual going through and speaking with homeowners and everything up to the deed and title work, uh, would be under the 75,000. Uh, the land valuation costs, uh, which would be provided to us ahead of time, uh, from, um, from property, professional property services, uh, through this contract. Uh, so we would have an idea before they actually went out. They would kind of evaluate those for us, would be a separate amount. So that's where the 95,000, uh, would most likely be utilized. Um, now at this time, we don't anticipate utilizing that much. Uh, we, again, we don't really have that number until this contract would move forward with professional property services. So along with that, back to the WASAC, uh, partnership, uh, some of the benefits, uh, the main, main one is just significant cost savings. Uh, we did have a, a separate quote provided to us from the same company, uh, that was going to be, uh, for an amount of 116,000. Uh, by, in coordinating with, uh, WASAC, there's a lot of duplicated services such as, um, uh, again, doing the land valuation thing, which will actually be covered by WASAC, because they're going to do that appraisal services, some deed works and things like that, that WASAC's contract's already covering. So they're not going to charge us duplication to do that again per parcel. Um, the other benefits is it enables a simultaneous discussion and allows us to be a part of a utility easement conversation while they're with the homeowner. So rather than going back to a homeowner, uh, at a different time, with a different project and a different discussion on a different easement, uh, this would definitely go better, uh, coordinated with the utility discussion and the awarded opportunity of adding the recreational component in there. It also secures the, uh, Greenway within the same easement, uh, right of way as the utility. Uh, so the last part is, you know, we have funds budgeted. We've kind of been planning for Greenways for a few years now. Uh, this is step one essentially, uh, until we have land to actually construct on, we can't move on to the next. This here is just a vicinity and sort of an index map. Uh, this should be, this is too small. It should be in your packet. Uh, this kind of just details the, the full alignment. Um, so, uh, we're, we're a little over three miles of Greenway here. So there's 25 individual parcels. And one item I do want to bring particular attention to is of this 75,000. Uh, make note that's a not to exceed amount. Um, they, uh, the property services, uh, have informed us that any funds at which they don't have to represent us to the full extent per parcel, they will not charge us. In addition, we do have, uh, a few, uh, parcels that we will not have them negotiate for us at all. For instance, you'll notice there's one, it's actually across the Mecklenburg County line. Uh, we actually have a couple under our own ownership now. Now, I know the question would be, well, why didn't we just go ahead and have those removed? And the reason being is that their, their mindset in consulting with them is that they would rather do the not to exceed amount for the full number of potential parcels in exchange of if we run into any uncertainties on the other parcels, there'll be a little extra money rather than us coming back to council and having to re-ask or redo a contract. So it's better to kind of just get a refund on the backend, I guess, is how they kind of see it. Uh, so with everything in that, uh, looking at the alignment, again, tied into the schools, tied into the, uh, uh, business district and everything. Uh, this would be step one of, uh, the steps of moving toward actual Greenway construction. Uh, there are no guarantees that we get every parcel either. Um, it just, uh, we don't know that till you start asking until we negotiate it. But with that, um, staff, for the recommendation, staff is recommending approval of a contract for an amount not to exceed $75,000 to Property Professional Services LLC for the easement and property negotiation of up to 25 parcels for the Back Creek Greenway alignment and approve the combination of two FY 2020, 2021 capital outlay purchases. 2019, 5,000, 001 and 2020, 5,000, 001 as it pertains, 2019, 5,000, 001 and 2020, 5,000, 001, I'm sorry, as it pertains to the budgeting line items, uh, and how to allocate the funding for this project. So with that, I do thank you for you and your time and I will entertain any questions. And Brian is also available for any of the financial questions if need.
Hey, Daniel, Councilman Russo here. Um, if you don't get all that approved, all of it, we'll have to pay for all of it. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, uh, Councilman Russo. The, the properties, there, there, there's some, there'd be some fees that will be owed for the administration and the discussion portion, which will be fairly minimal, but it would not be the 3,000 per parcel. So we would not pay for deed and all the other, uh, pieces of that dollar. It goes toward that if they're, if they're not successful in securing that parcel. That's correct.
I hope we do and thank you very much for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is, this is Councilman Dellinger. Um, and I don't know if you're the one to answer this or not, but when we approach one of the homeowners and we're actually, physically all we're going to get is a right of way. We're not going to physically own the property, right?
My understanding, and I think Rich could clarify if I'm wrong on this, is that we would, it would be the easement and it would be a free and clear. Uh, Rich, can you chime in on that? I can't remember the specific language used and how that easement would be secured to us. Are you available to answer that?
Uh, yes. The way I understood it was that we weren't taking the underlying fee. We were just taking, you know, we were going to be in concert with WASAC to have their sewer line and our easement for the, uh, Greenway kind of in the same, uh, general area. Um, and we weren't, neither of us were going to take the underlying fee, just, just, uh, own the rights that we need that are essential to the easement. And the underlying property would still belong to the, to the, uh, property owner. They just wouldn't be able to use it to their full extent because it would be limited by the rights in either one of the easements. That's what I understood.
Yeah, I believe that's the way I understood it too, Rich. So, uh, Ronnie, to, I guess in, in short is that we, we would obtain, as Rich is saying, it would be essentially the same easement. Now, uh, obviously the sewer easement will be a wider right of way than what the Greenway is. I don't know the specifics on WASAC's right of way. I think it's 30 or 40 feet, whereas our Greenway is 25 feet. In either case, it's more narrow, so it rests with inside the utility right of way. Um, and we own the rights per how it is written in the easement language. And the property owner cannot do anything, cross-contract or any of that nature on that piece. But as Rich is saying, I don't think we own it fee simple, uh, but we own the rights of the easement.
Yeah. Uh, rights in, in, in real property are, they tell you it's like a bundle of sticks. And when you give somebody an easement, you're giving them a couple of sticks out of your bundle. So they still own the underlying fee and still own most of the sticks. But we just took a couple away from them to be able to, um, have the easement in place. Me, and most of that would just be surface, you know, uh, it's not underneath the property, uh, like the sewer easement would be. Ours would just be on the surface and they couldn't obstruct it. And it would, um, we'd be able to pave it or whatever. And, and basically those sticks would just be, to be able to do those specific things with reference to the property. So they would still own, you know, the underlying property and, you know, and, um, all the other parts of, that would go along with it to, except to the extent that interferes with the easement.
Well, I'm glad to hear that our part will be less than the utility part. Um, one of the concerns is just as the property owner, you've taken, uh, we've taken their property and it's not necessarily us because the utility has already, but we've actually taken value away from the property. And is there any way that we, that we help redefine their property value? Because let's say they have an acre of land and you take a quarter of it to have utilities, to have a Greenway on it. I want to be sure that they're not being taxed as if it was a true one acre that they've got glory and they can use it all for. Is there any concerns there? Is there any way, Rich, that we can, and help them get their property reevaluated? Because we are taking a portion of it, basically.
Rodney, it's my understanding that, that after that happens, the tax office recomputes all that. They take that into account. I think that's all done internally. And so it does, you know, end up affecting their tax value and may reduce it just because there's an easement for a sewer line or an easement for a re-Greenway that's on their property. That's my understanding of it.
Yeah, that is correct, Rich. It'll get reassessed once that deed is filed. Uh, and then of course there's a monetary payment from the town to the property owner for that easement. So we, we're not just taking it from them. There will be monetary payment, uh, in addition to any tax assessed value adjustment that the county would provide.
Yes. So Ronnie, the way, the way they'll do it is they'll, they'll do a measurement of the property. They'll take the length of property and the width and they'll calculate the acreage. And we will pay a fair market value to that homeowner.
But as I read the article, it did say the first question that they're going to ask is, will you give this to the town? Will you give this?
Sure. Uh, well, absolutely. A homeowner certainly has the, uh, and that's very common, uh, for any kind of park or land dedication. Uh, that, that will always be the first question is, are you willing to donate it? Um, and then that's, that's solely up to the, the property owner to decide. Uh, that's, there's not anything going to be leveraged, uh, or anything to, to advocate that. It just, they just do that by fir-first right. And then they have the first right to refuse that too. Uh, and then we, they move on to the, uh, fair market value. Uh, so some other interesting stuff you might could, could, uh, consider looking into or looking up is, um, there's a lot of real estate statistics available, uh, readily available that actually show that more often than not, property values that are in connection or in proximity to Greenways particularly, and park systems are anywhere between 6% and 28% in added value, depending on where you are in the country, of course. Um, and then there's a lot, a lot of statistics out there on that, uh, as far as real estate market values. So.
Well, thank you for that. Let me ask one other question. So when they sign the agreement, is it going to be that they're not going to have to maintain this in any way, correct? They're going to, we're going to mow, we're going to grade, if, if whatever, somebody else is going to do all that and that's not going to be their responsibility?
That, that's correct. We, we maintain the full right of way and there would be a combination or an agreement probably arranged with WASAC to determine, to determine what, what is, what, who, who manages what between the utility and the Greenway portion. But the property owner will not be responsible for any of it. That's correct.
Okay. Because that is different than a walkway right of way, correct, Haynes?
Yeah. So a resident doesn't have to actually maintain like a sidewalk, uh, within the right of way of their home. Uh, they do have to maintain the landscaping between the sidewalk and the roadway. You're right, Rodney. This would be different than that particular situation. We would be the ones responsible likely. We or WASAC would maintain that easement.
All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you answering the questions.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Hey, Daniel, this is Councilman Patrick. Um, am I correct in saying this would more or less close the loop on an entire Greenway system within Harrisburg?
Uh, that, that is correct in terms of what we're looking at as our primary and priority Greenway sections in the, in, in the town of Harrisburg. So essentially this would, if we were, if we're successful with every parcel, and of course we hope we are, uh, we would, uh, dead end at Fuda Creek, which confluences with Rocky we would dead-end at Fuda Creek, which confluences with Rocky River. Rocky River, it confluences right there at actual WAC's treatment facility and circles back around to Farmill Park, and then comes back under four eighty-five to, or not four eighty-five, forty-nine to Morehead. So essentially, you would have a complete closed circuit that would be multiple miles upwards of, just just guessing here, somewhere in the neighborhood of about eight to ten miles of contiguous Greenway for Harrisburg residents. So very, very, very key piece here and very, very exciting potential for the future, certainly.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
Good for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion on the floor?
Smith, second.
Properly seconded, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron? Councilman John? Councilman Rodney?
Aye.
Councilman Ian?
Aye.
Councilman Rick?
Aye.
Councilman Troy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next up, staff workforce plan relating to COVID.
All right, Mayor and Council, bear with me while I get this presentation loaded up here for us. All right, for consideration and discussion tonight is an update to our workforce plan that we put in place related to and responding to the impacts of COVID nineteen. So back in our April Town Council meeting, the staff presented and prepared a list or a group of temporary revisions to our personnel and leave policy that you guys adopted under, at that time, our local state of emergency declaration related to COVID nineteen that is still in place. So some of the priorities that we had when we established that plan, obviously, very new, really unsure of how long it was going to last and and what really the total impacts were going to be. But we wanted to make sure that first and foremost, the business activity of the town continued with limited service interruptions or limited disruptions at all to sort of overall workload of our employees. We also wanted to make sure that our employees were provided a safe work environment, those that were working at the time. If you recall, when we made that decision, and actually, when the school systems made the decision to shut down in mid-March, we closed all of our facilities as a result. So when we closed those facilities, it meant an office wasn't available for an employee to normally return to work for and conduct their normal business. So we made many efforts to ensure that our work environments were safe. That was via modifications to the office place facilities, access to PPE, several other modifications that we made to return some of those folks to work. But we also wanted to make sure that the employees were not negatively impacted financially from the COVID nineteen pandemic, meaning that if they lost, you know, childcare, or suddenly their school age child was at home with them, and they needed to adjust accordingly, if they needed to take time out of work related to COVID nineteen, we were going to allow them and work with them to do so. So the initial action, again, that the Town Council took was to authorize the town to adjust its personnel and leave policies to allow employees to utilize staggered schedules or adjusted work schedules, flexible work schedules, the ability to telework or work from home, and/or potentially reduced hours for employees due to the nature of their work. So for instance, if their general responsibilities suddenly became non-existent or not as necessary related to the impacts of COVID nineteen, we still work with them to create a plan to allow them to move forward and work. Also, of course, we've gotten a lot of guidance from the federal government related to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And so a lot of information was coming out that time with how we were to apply that, what employees would be eligible for that, and under what conditions. A lot of different qualifications for how to respond to utilizing Families First Coronavirus Care Act benefits. But what we decided to do at that time was to provide our own benefit, basically supplement and follow the FF-CRA leave benefit outlined by the federal government. And the reason that we decided to do that is we were financially responsible for it anyway. So as a local government, we were exempt from reimbursement, we exempt from any sort of tax benefit that, for instance, large corporations may have been able to obtain by having to pay out this benefit to employees who were eligible. So we decided to take that on ourselves and pay that out. We referred to it and doc- documented it for our employees as SERP time, C-I-R-P with SERP standing for Contagious Illness Response Plan. And so anybody who qualified for FF-CRA leave would also qualify for our SERP leave at that time. But we also established the list of exempt and essential employees, basically identifying who of our employee base would actually qualify for those leave benefits. We did also allow emergency responders to qualify for FF-CRA under certain qualifications. So the actual FF-CRA exempts them completely, but we did open up the opportunity under certain qualifications for them to be eligible for this leave. So we're a little bit above and beyond what the federal government had required. But essentially, what we agreed to do was ensure that all of our full-time and permanent part-time staff members were paid their full salary, given that they qualified for leave under FF-CRA, or they were unable to work the full complement of their schedule due to either being positively diagnosed with COVID nineteen or being under sort of any sort of required quarantine or having to care for individuals who were or were impacted by childcare and school closures. So we worked with employees initially. That was obviously a big change for us and and had to work through a lot of individual plans for each employee. So obviously, a one-size-fits-all plan wasn't going to be possible due to the nature of work conducted in all of our various departments. So kudos to our department managers to, for working very hard to understand what their workforce needs. So working with individual employees, understanding scheduling constraints, understanding the business need of the town, and working to try to make sure that those employees gradually work back, because it was sort of a quick and immediate shutdown. And then it was a lot of planning, and there was a lot of procedure and a lot of policies and a lot of adjustment made as we began to try to understand what those impacts were. And then as we tried to work to bring those employees back, either in a safe manner or allow them to set up flexible schedules or the ability to work from home. So sort of what's next and what's changed since the middle of March when that happened? Obviously, when it took place, we certainly didn't understand that we would be five months removed and still be facing the same impacts of it. So and unfortunately, looking forward, we have no idea when we will be able to return to normal. So what we've done is just to continue to adjust and adapt and make sure that we are getting the most out of our employees, but at the same time, providing them either a work environment that is safe for them to work in or given the resources that they need and the structure that they need to ensure that their tasks are continuing to get done. So again, kudos to the department managers. Each one of them has created unique plan, workforce plans for their department, understanding the importance of ensuring that, A, our, the financial dollars of the town are not going wasted, that we are actively engaging with our employees and that we have work for them to do, and that we are giving them that opportunity to do that. So we've been very fortunate to have access to several federal grant funds, the CARES Act being one of those. We invested those dollars either in facility improvements here within our organization or in products, whether that be IT, whether that be PPE. We've implemented certain kiosks for health screenings at each of our facilities that we require our employees to go through on a daily basis. So a lot of different things were put in place that allowed us to sort of return to work in as close to a normal process as we possibly could. Again, absolutely, we had to utilize flexible schedules and telework for a certain portion of our staff who were able to do so. But unfortunately, we have a new variable thrown our way. The school systems announcement that they are going to conduct a hundred percent remote learning introduces a new variable that we didn't have earlier in the spring in terms of managing our workforce and giving them the opportunity to work with us and and continuing to, A, again, meet the expectations of their job, but also adapt and adjust to the new challenges that they have at home. So I've got it broken down pretty simply here to some recommendations moving forward. So a lot of it will be to continue to sort of apply and move forward with some of the same things that we implemented the first go-around. But we also, at the same time, have some adjustments and some some differentiation and some expectations that we would want to see from employees moving forward. So the first is to continue the same application of exempt and essential status that we applied previously. So that same group of employees that we outlined earlier will will remain that same group. There's no change there. We want to sten- continue to stay in compliance with the FF-CRA, of course, and of course, any other federal or state mandated leave benefits that we have to provide. And we want to continue to allow emergency responders to qualify for some portions of those benefits under FF-CRA. We want to continue to allow staff to utilize flexible schedules and remote or telework to complete their work duties. But we're going to add some new requirements, and I'll go into those in a little bit more detail in a moment. But obviously, that is extremely necessary for us to be able to achieve our work moving forward. Our our facilities are too large and it's too complex for us to find the ability for everyone to return to work safely, not to mention you throw in the the childcare and and school age children issues that we now face, or at least those that have school age children face. We also are going to require any qualifying employee to now utilize the benefits allowed by FF-CRA. They're spelled out there in FMLA, and extended leave within the FF-CRA. What this does is this effectively ends the town-provided benefits. So it's not, it's really a switch out. It's, we were required to provide it under FF-CRA. We voluntarily chose to provide it without an individual having to go through the processes of of actually formally using the FF-CRA leave benefit. But at this point, moving forward, we are going to require those individuals, of course, they have to qualify. So there are specific qualifications for FF-CRA. And so we're going to continue those and and make sure that an employee qualifies first, and they will utilize all of the benefits that are available to them via FF-CRA. However, they can use those benefits incrementally. So for instance, you you get eighty hours immediately under FF-CRA. Well, that didn't have to, that eighty hours doesn't have to immediately be used all at the same time. The employee can work if they're eligible to work or have work to do, and they can only maybe use an hour or two a week or five hours a week of FF-CRA benefit. So we will work with them to establish what that plan looks like and how they can capture and utilize that benefit, but at the same time, continuing to work in their their fullest capacity. So what happens when an employee exhausts all of their FF-CRA leave? And maybe there's a situation where they're unable to continue back to work due to a, due to a qualifying impact of COVID nineteen, say childcare, or having to stay home with a school age children, a child. They exhaust all of their FF-CRA leave. What we will then ask of the employee is that we will match any leave time that they need to fulfill their hundred percent of their normal pay. So for an example, if an employee is qualifying for FF-CRA but is exhausted all of that leave benefit available to them, and they are only able to work, in this example, thirty hours per week, again, due to a qualifying event, that employee would be required to use five hours of their accrued either sick time, vacation time, or comp time. And the town will kick in and provide the other five hours of leave to achieve a full forty-hour work week or to ensure that that employee receives a hundred percent of their normal pay. And I want to make sure that I'm very clear that we have all non-eligible employees. So any employee that doesn't qualify for FF-CRA leave, we have all of them either have have returned to one hundred percent of their normal work schedule, whether it's in the office or in the field, or have been established an opportunity to do that via telework. So the application of this particular workforce plan moving forward would only apply to employees who qualify for FF-CRA. So want to make that, make that very, very clear. And again, we have to provide FF-CRA. So it's not something that we can opt out of. It's mandated for us to require by, to provide by the federal government. So what we are doing, we're going above and beyond in the instance that the employee exhausts all of this FF-CRA leave benefit available to them. And then we're asking them to split that remaining time, either, again, via sick, vacation, or comp time. If an employee exhausts all of those accrued time that they have available to them, then the town, again, would kick in and cover any of that that time. But the expectation is, is you're not, you're not talking about covering the forty-hour work week with someone. The expectation is, is the employee is going to be able to either have an alternative schedule, work from homes during some of that time, or have some ability to participate in work with the town. And there will be a small portion of time that may be necessary to cover from the town due to their limitations related to a qualifying event related to COVID nineteen. So to specify and break that down a little bit further, any employee who utilizes a flexible work schedule or teleworks or is unable to complete the full complement work schedule will be required to establish a workforce plan with their immediate supervisor, department manager, and that all of those will be approved by the Human Resources Director and the Town Manager. We will not out- allow any employee to telework a hundred percent of their schedule, and a measurable and approved work plan will need to be implemented by their supervisor. So there's going to be, there's actually going to be follow-up to this, and we'll want to make sure that those employees who are teleworking or have flexible work schedules, there's an ability for their supervisor to monitor that work that's going on and make sure that, again, that the employees are staying active and and moving forward with their responsibilities. So I mentioned it earlier, if an employee happens to exhaust all of their FF-CRA and all of their accrued leave with the town, the town will kick in and provide that emergency leave benefit to achieve a hundred percent of the employee's salary. So try to break it down in two slides there, really quickly, a very complex and detailed process. You guys have a resolution for consideration of adoption in your packet that spells it out in a little bit more detail. But Taisha is available, I believe, here tonight. If you have any questions for her, I'm also available if you have any questions for me on this, and I'll turn it over to you guys.
Any questions from Council?
Yeah, I got one. So Haynes, are the people going to be working forty hours, or we paying people for not working their forty hours? That's just, after you get through all the hoopla.
Yeah.
No offense, but, I mean, I want to know what the residents are going to think, what we're thinking. I mean, you told me at one point in time, they're real bit, probably they are, but then one point in time, you told me that they're probably not working as much as they would if they were in the office, but they're still working. So I'm just looking out for all of us, including you, that pay the taxes. Where are we at with it? I'm not being smart, just trying to be cordial for whatever.
Yeah, no, I understand the question completely. So early on in April and May, as we were working the transition, certainly, we had some groups of employees who were not working, as in putting in actual time, working forty hours of work for the town. And that was probably due to no fault of their own. It's because we shut our facilities down, and at the time, either didn't have telework opportunities for them, or the department manager had yet, hadn't yet put in procedures, policies, or alternative work schedules for them to be able to return to work, even if they could. And that, if, again, if you remember back how much we shut things down and how the, how much limitation there were on number of people who could gather at one place at one time. But as the relaxation of the state's stay-at-home order and then safer-at-home order, as that's, as we've moved from phase one into phase two, that's allowed us to have more people in in a facility at at one time. We've had to, the opportunity to take advantage of CARES Acts to buy equipment and buy and update our facilities so that we can make them safer for employees. So right now, all of our employees who can work either in the facility or can work at home are working forty hours a week. The only group of employees that we have that may not be achieving that full workload, whether that's forty hours a week or thirty hours a week or for our public safety individuals, the only folks who are not achieving that are folks who qualify under the FF-CRA. And so if they qualify, we are working with them. And of course, by FF-CRA standards, we either have to pay two-thirds or a hundred percent of their salary. So that's a requirement by law. So to answer your question simply, yes, unless they qualify. So to answer your question simply, yes, unless they qualify under FFCRA for leave, and then we are working with them to establish a schedule that will work for them. And now, moving forward, they're going to be required to use some of their accrued time, so their sick, vacation, comp time, to make that whole. So we're not, we're not funding any employee to sit on the couch or to not work if they are unable to. If there is work for them to do, they are doing it, again, unless they qualify for FFCRA leave.
Okay, thank you very much for that, and I don't mean to pick on this group, and I hope Daniel, don't take offense to it, if Daniel's on there. What are we doing with Parker Rec since we don't have a lot of programs going on? We just have, but summer camps in the summer. Some of them we're doing videos. I mean, are we paying people to do videos or what are we doing?
Yeah, so Daniel was actually working on a revenue perspective, an expense perspective for his department. So obviously, when we don't do youth sports, that's a big part of what his staff does for a majority of the year. We've supplemented youth sports, even though we're not doing it in a league variety. We are offering sports camps that, last I heard, I think we had close to 900 kids sign up for. So his staff is actively working to manage those camps and the 900 participants in that. And so I can get a more detailed response to you from Daniel, but I know he is working on putting kind of a revenue generation kind of spreadsheet together, and once we review that, we'll get that out to all of council.
Okay, thank you very much, Haynes. It isn't only me, I'm just trying to give you some type of idea, not you. Probably there's a lot of eyes watching you, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, sure.
You know, probably a lot of residents are saying, what's going on? So I'm just trying to ask the question so you give a better answer.
Yep, no, perfect. And I can understand the questions and concerns. I've seen a lot of organizations around us who have just sort of sent their employees home and aren't necessarily requiring them to produce any sort of measurable work output. So we definitely don't want to do that here, and we want to make sure we're being cognizant of the tax dollars that we spend on salaries and benefits for employees. And honestly, our employees want to work. Their response has been fantastic. They've worked with us to show that they're capable of flexing and working in these unique times. But, you know, right now, I feel very confident that our employees are working and working hard for us.
I appreciate it, and this is not the time to send them home because now they're getting $400 a week instead of $600 a week in the game. Like you said, we didn't know how long this was going to, was going, we thought we'd be out of it by now.
Haynes, I did have one question, and this probably comes because more so than I'm a telecommuter than anything else. I noticed, you know, before we had COVID-19, we all discussed remote working, and that was never an option. COVID-19, you guys figured out how to work remotely, but I noticed in your summary, you stated that no one would be 100% remote. Is there a financial reason that they have to come into the office that they could not? I mean, if they're doing 90% of their work at home, what benefit is that additional 10%?
Yeah, so I think for us, since it's so new for us, right? Like, your industry and your company is probably very used to working from home and how to monitor and hold accountable the employees who are in that environment. So that's really the biggest reason, is so that we can have measurable and accountability for those employees who are doing that, only because it's so new for us.
I mean, I think your measurables are, are they getting the job done or are they not? I mean, like I said, I get that there are some folks that just don't understand that privilege of being able to work in that space, and that's usually identifiable by the lack of production. But if you've got someone, you know, meeting all their demands and the work's getting done, I don't see that there's really a benefit to have them come in, that additional 10%, when we really should be separating each other during the pandemic.
Yeah, so Councilmember Smith, I am totally open to that idea. This piece was actually put in here after talking to some other council members who were a little concerned about having the ability to telework. So this is an open discussion for us. We can certainly change that if the group wants.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith, I will also add to that it does allow for some organizational engagement. As you know, when you're telecommuting, you're kind of in the cycle, although we do a lot of virtual meetings and we get the work done that way, but to just have that social interaction, of course, safely, with precautions, we just feel like it'll still continue to keep employees engaged in the organization, which we've done a good job over the past few years.
And, you know, the creativity in the corporate space has been very interesting, but I've seen where some organizations now will have an hour quote-unquote baking break where they all go on virtual, and they're interacting with one another, and it's not work for a moment. It's actually doing, you know, a baking exercise or something like that, just to break that craziness of being at home and having that interaction. So it may be worthwhile just kind of putting a group of folks together just to kind of get a pulse of what your staff is feeling right now, too. That's my comments. Thank you.
This is Councilman Dellinger. The human resources, and you know how the staff works. I trust that you know what needs to be done. You know, if you have a house that has COVID, of course, they're not going to be able to work, telework 100%, and you're taking that into consideration. Is there any, and I'm sure you've got this in place, is there any mechanism in place that if somebody needs to work from home, doesn't have all certain necessary items, that they could be doing a cross-training exercise of reading the websites, proofreading this, proofreading that? Is there an opportunity during this time that we are doing cross-training to be sure that we can help each other out? Should a family member come down with COVID, that there's somebody else around that's able to do their job? Just a suggestion, just a question, and you know, I want to take an opportunity for them to update some of the webpages and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, so we're definitely going to get flexible and creative with individuals in that situation. And to your point about the website, we've made that a priority and have already assigned staff to address that for us. So we should be working on that in the coming weeks.
Just to add on what Haynes said, we do a lot of collaboration between the department managers to ensure some of the projects that went by the wayside pre-COVID, if they can help out, just so that we're ensuring that everybody's doing their part. And when we come out of this, we want to come out of this better than what we went into it with. To be able to do some of the things like you discussed, the website and other things that we're trying to get done that you can't get done in a normal day. And so we've been very creative. We, you know, staff share if we need to, because we don't know if somebody is going to go down with COVID. You know, the county numbers are going up, and so the likelihood that we're going to have more positive cases in the future is a definite, I almost feel like. So I think that we're putting things in place to prepare for that as well.
That was good, and thank you to both, and please thank our employees too also for doing their job during this time.
I thank you guys for the support.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve, ma'am.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second, Smith.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could I just add one thing?
Go ahead.
I'd just like to add that this is one of the reasons why we are one of the best places to work. That's all.
Yep, absolutely. All right, we're going to get a vote. Councilman Ron.
Aye.
Councilman John.
Aye.
Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
I missed Councilman Ian, sorry.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for that. Next up, Cabarrus County Public Library Board of Trustees appointment. You're off.
Yep, sorry, council. So this one's fairly straightforward one for us, at least from a staff involvement. The Cabarrus County Public Library has a board of trustees that consists of members from all municipalities that have a library branch. So because we have a branch here in Harrisburg Park, we can appoint a member to this board. Typically, there's no staff involvement because it is a county-led, county-controlled board, but again, you guys have the opportunity to make an appointment to that position. Since I've been here, the same individual has served in that role for two terms, and so this is, for this particular upcoming term, the individual that had previously sat in the role decided that they no longer wish to serve. So for the first time in many years, and first time in my tenure here, we have the opportunity to appoint a new person to this position. In working with the library system, they had never, never, never run into the situation of having more than one applicant who wished to serve in this role. This time, we are fortunate enough to have two individuals who wish to serve in this role. So those individuals' applications have been included in the packet for you guys to review. Again, all of that information came directly from the library. The Harrisburg Library Branch Director also offered his recommendation for who they would like to see appointed, and that was provided again in your packet as well. But this is totally a discussion for you guys to have and make an appointment, and we'll alert the county of your decision.
Thank you, Haynes. Councilman Selberg got fielded numerous phone calls on this, and it is my recommendation that council has never gone against recommendations from staff. And so therefore, I would be in favor of supporting that, the recommendation that has been brought before us, but I would look to other council for suggestions.
Troy, I'll jump in on your coattails on that. You know, I'm conflicted because one of the applicants reached out early on, no, he's reached out to a lot of council members, very well-directed, and I was excited that of their interest in the position. At the same time, I also saw the qualifications for the other applicant, so I am very challenged by this decision. I'll look to other council members for some direction here.
This is Councilman Dellinger. I will agree, Mr. Freeze has contacted me numerous times. He does seem like a very ambitious young man and willing to do a lot of work for the library. I am a little conflicted as well as the other candidate's resume is a PhD and quite extensive, so we are in a dilemma here.
I think I'd echo that as well. I did hear from Mr. Freeze on multiple occasions, was impressed with his willingness to reach out to council and answer some questions about his qualifications, a, an opportunity I did not have with the, with the other applicant, but I'm certainly with the other council members in that it's a, it's a very tough decision.
Having heard from, having heard from other council, and this is very difficult because Mr. Freeze has lobbied so very hard for this position, and his passion shows in his face, and it also shows in his voice as he reaches out. But again, we have never went against council's recommendation and, excuse me, staff's recommendation, and I'm going to have to motion that we support staff in their recommendation for this appointment. I motion for that.
I got one question for you, Troy. We have went against staff in public in Parker Rec for different, yeah, different people they want.
Thank you, I'm, I thank you. I missed that. Thank you.
We have went against staff in certain areas like Parker Rec or whatever we wanted to, so that's on your statement. I will, I will, whatever you guys want to do.
So the recommendation is for, what's her name? I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull it up. I'm not, but is that the recommendation? Jillian, Jillian, I'm sorry. That's what the recommendation was for, for Jillian. So your motion, Troy, is to appoint her? Was that correct? Just making sure I understand.
I, I will, I will retract my, I will retract my motion.
Okay, so we're back where we started. Somebody want to put a motion on the table? It's either Ian or Jillian. I don't think they both can do it. And I know this has been delayed a couple of times, it's been several months now, if I'm not mistaken.
Based on the information Mr. Russo has given, I will recommend that Mr. Freeze, who has diligently lobbied for this position, be nominated to take this position.
We got a motion on the floor for Mr. Freeze.
I'll second it.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron.
Aye.
Councilman John.
Aye.
Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond. This time? Got it. Motion carries. All right, we'll jump over. I don't think we had any action items, if I'm not mistaken. So we're going to go to a closed session. The last invite that I sent you, because I had the timing wrong on the other one, says the one that starts at 7 o'clock. If you can jump over to that and we'll come back to this one after we come back out of closed session. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go to closed session.
Motion on the floor. Get that this time in a second. All in favor, say aye. Just do it. Here we go.
Jack?
We got you.
Thanks.
Are we good? We closed this meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.